Six o'clock, I call the meeting to order. First order of business is public comment. If you'd like to make a comment, come to the podium. Pick your name and address. You have three minutes. Address your comments to the board and not to the audience. Chief Dronsfield.
Good evening. I'm Tom Dronsfield. I'm your chief of police. I want to address some negative and disheartening comments that have been coming up neighborly and on social media in general regarding the relationship between the police department and the Board of Selectmen. These comments, they can be hurtful. They do not foster any good. And I just want to speak to everybody. There is no animosity between the Board of Selectmen and the police department. The board has been working very hard with myself in coming up with ideas to retain the people that we have and to hire new people. In fact, we've made two conditional offers. Once the backgrounds are done, we should have two new people starting soon. I just, it bothers me to see the comments that come out on this page. Not everybody has all the information. There are a lot of things that go on behind the scenes because there are personnel issues that not everybody knows is going on. And it's not helping us in moving forward for the better of the town and the department. And I would just like for these comments to stop and just allow myself and the board to work together the way we have been to get the ball rolling into better the future of the police department and the town. I'll get the site. And I made a post this morning. I don't know if any of you saw it. I posted it on Facebook. It was shared on Neighbor League. That's heartfelt. That's how I feel. And I just want us to move forward in a positive direction. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Marie Wolf, 41 Lake Hill Road. I just got my abatement results back, which I don't know who else has filed for one. But I live by the river and my path behind the house is a snowmobile path and it's become a wet trail. And I have been complaining about it for a while. I put no trespassing signs. And I filed an abatement based on lack of privacy. I don't know if any of you would like people walking through your backyard, walking their dogs, letting their dogs do their business, beer bottles, whatnot. But I was turned down. So that said, the Snowmobile Association is going to be closing that trail and it'll be open only during the winter. So, thank you assessors.
Anybody else? Let's check this out.
Paul Gazaski, 46 Lamprey Lane. A resident since 1985, publicly and a citizen of New Hampshire, a resident since 1975. These comments are relative to what's been happening over the last few days here. But in general, the nation, the nation's really struggling and that has its way of working its weight on to our level. You know, I would like to share with the board some things that I noticed that maybe would be helpful to the board. The way I see the structure of the town is that you are elected officials, obviously. Andy is our town administrator. He is at your behest and call. He really administers the town, okay? And the department heads run the departments. They need to have the freedom to do their jobs. So we call Andy the town administrator because his job is to administer. The board, in my mind, is in a position where your two duties are, number one, to listen, to really, really listen, and to remain value neutral as much as possible as you approach decisions. So you're really decision makers. In my years in living with Lee, there are moments that come up, like these moments, that I witnessed board members in delicate positions and where they basically are on committees, as you should be, but they're in positions where they're in a decision-making position on a committee. So, for example, Scott, you know, you serve as vice chair of the Historical Society. That puts you in a unique position as chair of this board and a vice chair of that group. There are probably moments, I'm speculating a bit, but probably speaking very practically, there are probably moments, maybe many moments, where basically you should recuse yourself from a number of things. In my years in the town, particularly working with the town center project, and I have a lot of history there, there have been moments when the select board has gotten, in my opinion, gotten too close to the project, okay? And has not remained value neutral. Has gotten in the mix, has forwarded personal decisions and agendas that maybe aren't in the best interest of the town. And here we are, years later, and we are still struggling with what to do with that. I think that as new board members, the learning curve must be really steep. I commend you for doing what you do. It's a merciless position. But I think you need to realize that department heads run their departments. We hire them to do that job. If we hover over them and intervene prematurely in their work, we interfere. I'm talking as board, okay? It's not your job to supervise them. We have Andy to do that. So I think you need to be very careful about that. Same thing can be said with committees, okay? We have committees and volunteers on committees, so committees can do work. They have chairs. They have structure. They need to have room and space to do their work. And I've shared these thoughts with board members and I'm sharing them with you tonight. And I think they're germane to this discussion and this whole topic tonight. Thank you.
Mr. Globe from Oyster River Youth Association. Might've come on a busy night, so. I'm actually just interested in finding approval to expand irrigation at Little Roo Park to the back sheet field area, which was Steve Bullock usually refers to, that relatively newly grassed area in the back section. ORYA is prepared to fund that expansion. We've gotten quotes for it already. Steve Bullock is in favor of moving forward with that. I know at least a couple people in the recommission are in favor of us moving forward with that as well. That would allow for us to have some expanded planning space, most specifically for spring sports, but in addition for fall sports as well. It would also help to beautify the park a little bit.
Okay. I guess we'll, I'm not going to respond to your request, but hopefully the recommission and Steve Bullock are going to bring that word to us.
Okay. So would the formal process be a request coming from ORYA or other parties?
Why don't you request it? Yes, you can request it, but I personally would like to hear from Steve and also from the recommission as well.
Sounds good.
Okay.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Hi, I'm Ruth Sample, 116 High Road. And I'm, well, I've been meaning to come to more meetings, but here I am. I'm here mostly because of the kerfuffle, I guess, on social media about allegedly low morale in the police department and who's responsible for it. And so I guess one thing I'd like to say is I don't know if there's low morale in the police department. I mean, I could just tell you from my perspective, there's low morale everywhere, partly because of the pandemic. A lot of people are just tired and worn out. This is true for teachers also. So it's possible that there's low morale, but I don't know that we can blame it on any one person or anything, especially without doing exit interviews. But also, it's probably not a great idea to run around saying that there's low morale since we're trying to hire people and then they're making it sound like Lee is this horrible hellscape that we can't wait to get out of. So it's just not super helpful. But it also struck me that, so there, you know, there might be some legitimate concerns on the part of the people in the police department, but there are other legitimate concerns from citizens about the way they've been treated by the police, allegedly. I myself complained because I thought we shouldn't be posting pictures of people who've been arrested for crimes on Facebook because they've only been arrested, they haven't been convicted. And I don't know if you've spent any time in Russia, but I have. And Befkin in Russia, they put you in a cage when you're on trial and they have a 98% conviction rate. And we really don't need to go in that direction. We should be a little bit more like other countries where they don't even let your picture be posted if you've been arrested for something. So as a civil libertarian, that was one complaint I made. I think it's a little thing. I don't think it's a huge thing. Overall, I think the police are doing a good job. I do think it might be worth considering a police commission. Certainly Portsmouth has a police commission with three officers, three people on it. It's an elected position. I talked to one member who told me it's about 10 hours a month of work. And I know Northwood has had a police commission since 1986. And that might be a good way for both citizens and the members of the police department to feel heard without getting the board sucked into it because I think it might actually be very helpful to have this kind of intermediate body. But I am not 100% sure what's involved in doing that. It's maybe something along the lines of what it took to do SB2 when we passed SB2. So if anybody knows how to do this, I'm asking around because I don't, I haven't been able to track down our town charter and I don't know how we would amend it for that. But that was just a thought that I had to calm things down a little bit because if we do want to hire more police officers, then we should perhaps address some of these issues a little more effectively, I guess, is what I would suggest. So anyway, I think the board's doing a great job. I think the police are doing a great job. I really don't have giant complaints. I just feel like we could solve this problem if we wanted to. Anyway, thank you.
Hey, I'm Dean Rubine. I'm also at 160 High Road. I came here tonight because I saw all this stuff online and I was worried a bunch of people were going to come out here and yell at Select Person Casper. And I just wanted to show my support for Select Person Casper, who I very much trust her judgment and I'm very happy that she's sitting in that chair. So I don't, for the most part, I don't have to worry about the town because she's there and I'm happy.
Thank you. Anyone else? Oh, should I, does anybody else want to speak? He's already spoken once. Anybody else? Nope? Okay, sorry.
I'd just like to address the concern of the morale of the police department. I can tell you the morale is fine. Our officers are happy. They're working hard. And as I stated, we've already given two conditional offers to two separate gentlemen. And once their backgrounds are complete, we'll swear them in and start the training. So, but this is why I made the post I made and why I made the statement I made here is I don't want that to happen. I don't want our people to feel that there's a negative atmosphere here. But as of right now, everything's fine. Everybody's working hard and we're doing good.
All right. Everybody well set? All right. Next thing is deployments. Martin?
Martin Thornton, Land Ranger Drive Trails Committee. So this last week, we had the students in from the summer program, working with the Trails Committee to do some, clean up the cemetery behind the town offices and they built a bench and with a great experience for the kids, great experience for us always to work with the kids, very positive sort of thing. One of the things we undertook was the cemetery behind the library, replacing some of the split rail fences. And Deb Schulman has sent out a memo and now we're here to request that we get some funding for that to reimburse the people that picked up the split rails. It was a great experience for the kids to see how that came out. The cemetery has kind of been ignored for a long time. Those huge boughs of pine needles came out there. So we're asking for permission that the cost of the split rails be picked up then. It was suggested that was split between the select board, cemetery trustees, Historic Society, and the Conservation Commission so that it wouldn't hit anyone's particular budget very hard.
No, thank you for hosting the children.
Yep.
Great experience.
Be a motion or something?
Can we use ARPA money to just pay the $104?
I'm just thinking that it's probably going to cost us more paperwork just to split it up.
That's what I was going to say.
I propose that the town just pays for it. And did you guys just buy these things so you are, you definitely need to get reimbursed?
Yeah, Deborah Dennis would need to be reimbursed.
Okay. So maybe if we could ask whoever it was to put reimbursement to the town and we'll just pay it out of town expenses?
Yep.
I'm not sure what line item, but it's $104, so.
Isn't it times four?
No, it's 26 times four.
Yeah, it's $104. So I think we just find a place to get it under, I don't sure, town buildings or something like that, under miscellaneous or something. Joanne will know where it is to get it.
Thank you.
And if she doesn't know, Andy can tell her.
All right. Thank you. We're out there enjoying our new bridges.
And extend our appreciation to all those people that worked on it for the November next year. All right. I'm number two, regular business.
So we attached several reports regarding the ARPA money that's been spent or earmarked. And I'm being told that the current title report is a list of the major projects that are completed. We haven't received a go-through of PD air conditioning yet, but as far as I know, we haven't received one. So that one is still outstanding. But these numbers should be tightened up soon, even more so for the next meeting, but.
So of the 240-some-odd thousand, this is only 125 has been expended. So how much is left out there to encumber? Do you guys know that? Maybe? Off of your head?
140?
What?
Oh, the total?
Well, here it says it's 239, but.
Right, that's in the half.
So the PD air conditioning was 60, something like that? 50, you remember?
I was 50-some-odd thousand, I believe. I 50s.
So I think the point that I was trying to get at, these are all good. I'm just, I think for our purposes, we want to know how much was awarded to us? How much has been spent? How much is still encumbered? So if we have any leftover, I think the last time I knew, we were a little bit over. But some of these things came in at different amounts, so. That's what I'm looking for. So I don't know if maybe Joanne or Andy can do that one.
Were you looking for like a separate report? So we have, we have voted on spending ARPA funds on various things. Yes. That all the bills have clearly not come in for yet. Do we have a list somewhere of everything we voted on to use that before? Yes. And so I guess what we'd like to see is how much ARPA money there was, how much we've actually already paid, and then how much we've promised to pay. And then is there any differences? Because some of these we had allowed more money for and have come in lower, so we want to see what's left.
So that's what I'm looking for because when we meet in on the 15th?
15th of August.
15th of August, we're going to need to know, because by that time, we'll have the second grant amount in. So we would like, personally, I would like to know how much is left over or how much is overexpended, overextended on the first allotment so we know how much we can allocate for the second. These are just for people's edification. There's monies that were rewarded for ARPA funds. We got about 240,000 last year and we get another 245,000 this year. So what the board's been doing, we're behind in terms of some maintenance projects. Like for instance, the PD downstairs just got their air conditioning fixed. So we've been using it for those particular things. So there's another installment of money. So we're trying to figure out how much we got left on the first batch and so we can start to allocate the second batch, so. If anybody was wondering, if you weren't, never mind. So if Joanne and Andy can do that, Denise, that would be great.
So the revision update is that everyone was on vacation in the last two weeks. Two weeks ago, apparently the electrician was on vacation and then last week, revision was on vacation. So they're working this week on finally getting together to, revision is going to have the numbers for the next meeting.
Okay. Okay.
Prior to reach scale?
Yep.
And is that part of this?
Okay, so what we're looking for in terms of, because we approved one for, is it?
Two.
Two years? And we're looking in terms of how much it would cost for the future as well. So that's what this is.
So Scott initially requested a 2% bump rate in years 1, 3, 5, 8, 9, and 10. So I guess it's, I don't know how you feel about accruing that pay scale.
Well, I think we wanted the information. I think I'll move on to a conversation with the chief. The other thing it says doesn't include the chief's salary though, so. Because the chief wasn't included.
He's not included in the, like, the plan. Unfortunately, Chief Dan is on vacation, so. Is he still up?
He's hiding back there, I think.
Oh.
Can I speak to this? I can try.
Sure.
Do you have this piece of paper?
So I don't believe the chief is on 10-step plan because he's a salary position. These are hourly wages that we're looking at for this 10-step plan.
Okay. So maybe we should wait till the chief's back? Is he back for the 27th?
For the 25th?
Or 25th, sorry.
Yes, he's gone this week.
So maybe we can have him come in and we can have a conversation about this now that we have the information?
So is the bottom, is that the total, what it costs each year if we keep the exact same people that we have right now?
Are you asking me? This is my, this is my first time seeing this.
Okay, nevermind.
I don't want to just shoot from the head on this.
So let's wait until the next meeting, the 25th, ask the fire chief to come and we'll have a conversation about this?
Wasn't I saying?
Yes, you did. Sorry.
Thank you.
Anything else in there, Denise?
There, I have nothing else.
All right, consent agenda. I move to accept the consent. Unless any of you want to move anything? No? So I move to accept the consent. Gender is presented. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? No? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Move to dollars. Get out, I'm in.
Here, you want to be yellow?
Yellow's bigger than everything.
I'll bring up the switch to do all of them, so. This is entered, is it duplicate or anything you need to put through box?
Sounds like it.
Okay.
Denise, do we need two of these?
This says this agreement executed in duplicate. Do you have a second copy you guys to sign? Do you want to do that now? I already signed it, but they probably wouldn't notice.
See if this initial out here too.
Thank you.
Yep.
Oh, I need the yellow.
Oh, sorry.
Someone listen. No?
There it is. We have three of us that all make this. Showing all my.
There's some words I want.
Not like you two.
I'm sorry, you're a cemetery.
Hey! Something for the silence.
I'm sorry?
Well, here's the bus that's on. I think one of my grandparents used to say, "It looks like a chicken on the cross."
It's almost like Scott and their puppy over the top. It's like, it's like a disaster, so.
I didn't know how to sign my new last name, so I just seconded. Old business? Any information?
Just the whole vacation thing. We should have the numbers by the next meeting.
Okay. New business?
We have the Randy Station Pavilion to say something about.
Are you on the, what are you on? Transfer station electrical or you on?
No, I have something that I just got information on today, so I wasn't allowed. It gives on the agenda at times, if I could.
Is it old business, new business, or?
It's old business. Something we had discussed before.
Okay, all right, all right. He's not, I don't know. He's the kind of disreputable type, so I don't.
We had discussed accreditation.
Oh, yeah.
So I've been working on the numbers and they finally got back to me. So not as bad as I thought it was going to be. The initial startup is 8475 and then it's 3470 a year. It's 30, they give me 36 months for what's called self-assessment to get prepared. I'd like to enter into that as soon as possible and get rolling on it. It's not going to take 36 months. We've been through it before. It's going to take a little bit longer because of, you know, staffing the way it is right now. But I think if we get a jump on it now and get working on it, and I'll have the money in my budget to be able to support it.
Exciting, thank you.
Okay.
Okay? You all okay with it?
Yeah.
It's great. Thank you. Budget, so, yeah. All right. Anything, new business, pavilion?
So it looks like Amy's put together a draft here for pavilion rental rates.
I do have one question concern. For certain of these, we're doing this $25 non-refundable deposit. How come we're not doing it for two of them?
Yeah, I was wondering that too.
I would think we would do it the same for everybody, so.
Is it because there's no fee? Is that your, so that is coming out of it?
If they clean up after themselves, they get the deposit back, so.
Are we not asking anyone to clean up after themselves? Wait.
Everyone should clean up after themselves.
Yeah, I agree.
So for lead residents.
Yeah, the first one in the first section and the first one in the second section, I would like to have a deposit.
So everybody has to pay a twenty-five dollar non-refundable deposit minimum?
Some of these got down here is fifty dollar.
Because you have more people, or it's a non?
Yeah, it's the non-resident part, yeah.
This is way more complicated than I thought it was gonna be.
Yeah.
Since I'm the one doing it.
What I, what I'd like to propose is that the residents have a twenty-five dollar deposit, and they get it back if they clean up after themselves. The non-residents have a fifty dollar deposit, and if they clean up after themselves, they get it back.
And if I remember correctly, the last time we talked about this deposit? Did y'all agree we should be doing a deposit?
Y'all?
Because that means she's gonna take the money and I get the money back, that's a whole bunch of steps.
That's a lot of steps, that's collecting money, who holds it? Are we cashing it, are we holding it, how long we holding it for? Joanne's gonna have to collect it, get it back. And we don't, only because we don't have a, we don't have a financial software in place yet to handle this. Maybe we can have, collect it as a check, and if they get it back, we just give them back their check. And not give a shit, does everybody have a check? I know.
I know. Well, either they, either they give us a check or they give us a money order, or they give us cash or something like that, and we keep it until it.
Credit cards have something to do that, like if you, if you rented a hotel or something, you can have a deposit and then you can return it after. I just don't know what that is, what that method is, so maybe that's something we're looking to before we decide.
Okay, I just don't, there needs to be a deposit. Because we're having somebody go down there to check it, that's costing the town something for those particular things. And I think it needs to be less for a resident, because, not a resident, non-residents.
Cleaning is cleaning, though. So I don't, I mean, if it's easier than, if you're, if you make a mess, it doesn't matter if you're resident or not resident, you still have to pay some money. I think the fee should be higher if you're not a resident.
Yep, it is.
So if you make a mess, you make a mess, you have to pay it the same.
If you're a non-resident, we take a.
Dislike.
Dislike to you, I guess.
I think the thing is, you think that residents would probably be more likely to not make a mess because it's their town and they care about it.
Well.
Don't we take a deposit?
We can, no, I don't like that particular part. And the thing is, we can try this for a while, and if we need to change it, we can change it, this is not instant.
We could have it be a fine instead of a deposit.
Then you get it.
Right, that's why I think the deposit would fund it, it'll make more sense.
So going forward, I'd like to change the first section, the lead resident or lead domicile nonprofit, to include a twenty-five dollar refundable cleanup deposit. The same thing for the non-resident or non-lead domicile nonprofit, the same kind of thing, a fifty dollar deposit. And administratively, you guys can work out what that is, but if it's a check or money or money order, something that you hold on to, and then when it's ascertained that they've cleaned up after themselves, then you can return.
And the last one, for not, for the business or profit organization minimum, so we don't know, should we fifty dollar usage be a fifty dollar deposit? I mean, just to make it clear, the town administrator doesn't see these, so I don't know why he put them in.
Well, maybe that needs to be tweaked.
Yeah, change that to the person actually is gonna look at it.
So for the next meeting, if you can have them tweak this, or if you, whoever did this, I don't know if Andy did it or you did it, but. So if you can get him to tweak, make those two tweaks, and if you need to change who they're talking to, then make that change as well.
Okay. All right, and then I thought I'd come up about number six on the second page. I think there's supposed to actually be a six, and then I think the Randy Stevens Pavilion is supposed to be seven, with seven bullets, the way this is written. This doesn't make any sense.
Okay.
Right? Number six is live music is not allowed, and it says, hey, Randy Stevens Pavilion at Little River Park. I think that's actually supposed to be seven. Yes. And then A should be uses generally handled, like there's some weird something going on there.
Yeah.
And I think we decided live music is out, is out of discretion, right? It's not that there's no live music.
They need to get permission.
So can we change live music is not allowed to live music is out of discretion? Because we have live music, so we want to make sure we're following these rules too.
Yep.
The Randy Stevens. We say it's not allowed, but then when they do their application, if they ask, if they ask about it, then I tell them they can apply to the board. They can come to the board and ask for music.
But it is allowed, so how do we make that more reasonable?
Include that in number six. Like live music is only allowed with permission from the selectmen or something like that.
How do we say it's, maybe live music only allowed with?
Permission.
Or approval, that may, it makes it clear that it's not.
Yeah.
Something, does that work?
Sure.
Do you have anything else?
I, that was the only thing I had.
Chief, have you seen this?
I have not.
Could you provide the copy to the chief to make sure he's okay with it? Because there's some things in here in terms of, you know, you'll need to police. So if Denise, if Andy and/or you think forward.
Yeah, I don't think he changed, this is the one that exists pretty much.
Just with changes and fees.
Yeah, the only thing he changed was fees, so this is, this exists now.
Okay.
No, I have seen it, but nothing changes.
All right, fair enough. Good trend, anything? No? You all set with it? So come back at the next meeting. Next.
Communication was put on by Rebecca. So we figured out how to attach the agendas to the calendar. Can we make sure we're still doing that on the face, on the website? Remember you had figured out how to put the agendas on the calendar link? And you did it, and it was fantastic?
Yeah, that's great.
And now we've stopped doing it.
So when they click, you want it on the calendar when they click on the calendar?
When you click on the calendar, I think you should get all the information, so I'm going to go through like three other pages to find it. And then I didn't know if there's anything else we could do to kind of make our Facebook a place to go for information. I didn't know if maybe we could ask for somebody's advice? If that somebody had any time.
Are you looking at somebody's?
I am, I am looking at.
I see, I think he's purposely looking down, but now he's looking up.
The, the police Facebook, I think, is to be held in an enviable position.
Outstanding.
An outstanding position, it gets lots of traction, people get a lot of information, people enjoy it.
Anything you want to share, just send it to us and we'll get it on there.
Is there any way we could maybe seek her advice, it's Jess, right?
Yep.
As I thought. Is there any way she might be?
She don't think it's me. She's a wordsmith.
I didn't think so. I didn't know if maybe.
I'll take credit for today's, I did write that for myself.
I saw yours today. I didn't know if maybe there was a way that Jess might have a couple extra minutes someday to, to work with. Maybe the town to maybe, I didn't know if that would be helpful. I just, ours is, it's not as fantastic as theirs, and that's not fun.
Yeah, I.
You know what I'm saying?
Denise and Jess get together, you know, on a not regular, but, you know, semi-regular basis to reconcile time off and things like that, and they can always do it then, or whenever, I can make Jess available whenever, she would love to do that.
The website?
The Facebook.
Oh, Facebook.
I was hoping maybe we could use Jess to help at the town Facebook, because she seems to have some really great ideas. The place Facebook is fantastic, will really enjoy it, and they're getting information they need. So is there any way we can apply some of their methods to the town Facebook? And it sounds like Jess, hopefully, maybe will be borrowed for small amounts of time to help us.
So do you, Andy do it, or who?
Andy does Facebook, but I'll.
Okay, so maybe Andy needs some help.
I think we need to be friends of the fact that it takes time.
I understand that, that's why I wasn't sure if we had time.
Yeah, we might have to think about how we pay someone going forward, or if we make that part of a job description in the future, something that will really mean to us, so we're getting somebody to ask that for it.
I can talk to Jess and I know what her answer is gonna be, it's gonna be yes, but if you want her to do your Facebook page, you send her the information, she'll polish it up.
Does she have time for that? I mean, she's.
She, yeah, she's, she's got time.
She's full-time, right?
Yep.
All right.
I think, I mean, I'll ask her tomorrow, but I'm sure her answer's gonna be yes, she moves for that.
Okay, I don't want it to be yes, though, if it makes her stretched more than.
Exactly.
Well, if, you know, if I have to take something off her plate and give her a little extra time, we'll, you know, we'll make it work.
Because I think it would be really fantastic if people could go to our Facebook page for information. Make that a better.
Okay, we'll talk to her on, get that, okay.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Anything else?
No, it's my life, as we're talking about webpages and all that stuff, we haven't had a chance to look into the ADA compliance on the webpage yet. Is that something that we can hire out or get some help with? I feel like it's a huge ask of everyone there, just to make it easier to maneuver.
I don't know, I feel like maybe we should wait for Andy, because I think he was looking into other.
Yeah, okay, I want to make sure we're working, but I don't, again, don't overstructure people that are already working really hard.
Or IT, maybe it never got formed, research nobody wants to be on it.
Why, keep looking at him.
Now I'm looking at him, I've been looking at him before. Would you like to say something for him?
Yeah, one, we need better chairs here, because I never can get up without my legs being asleep.
That's very reasonable.
Or I'll start bringing a donut. I could run an initial audit on the website in an automated fashion that would tell you whether or not you're in violation of ADA compliance.
That would be amazing.
It wouldn't catch everything, but it would probably tell you that you're not, or that you, rather, you're not in compliance, yeah.
But we know where.
You would know some places, yeah, I mean, some of the basic things are, it needs to be in high contrast, you need to have certain images annotated so that, basically so that people with screen readers can navigate through. But yeah, there's likely issues there, and at least then you'd know you have to fix that for sure.
Thank you.
Yeah, I will start that now.
And the chair issue is because you're getting older, Court, that's the problem.
Is it all the same website?
No.
Well, it's different, the Facebook page is different.
Oh.
It's separate.
Let's start with the webpage.
Yes.
And then we'll work on the rest.
Facebook, I know not, so.
Yeah, you can borrow that chair if you want.
No, I'm just gonna shift position.
All right, next thing is town signage, I just stuck that on. I've noticed there's some, there's numerous signs in town that say Town of Lee seventeen sixty-six, and they're fading. So like the one that's at the end of George Bennett Road, if I look really hard when I'm driving by, I can make out what it says. So can we look into see if we can get those updated or whatever? I know there's one in South Lee and there's one in North Lee, so I'm not sure. I don't see has any more of them, or if that's all we've got, so maybe we can get it replaced, or at least that one replaced.
Or the funding type thing.
Yes.
He's like, yes, don't need to.
It was a produce sign, I think, I know, so.
So we had that issue with the sign out front, the safety complex. Dave Demming came in and did it in vinyl, it doesn't fade.
Okay.
It's glossy, it stands out. Might be worthwhile having to take a look at the signs, they're not that big, and he used to do one piece and stick it on.
They were metal with the.
Yeah.
They'd all be uniform, which I think is nice.
Right, and that's, and I actually did notice that sign the other day when I was driving by, it's quite faded, so if you want, I can talk to them tomorrow.
Yeah, if you check with Steve, I think there's three, but there might be more.
Yeah, I know there's one on North River Road coming up, this one here.
There's one in North Lee. I don't know if there's any other ones.
All right, yeah, I'll check with Steve and.
No, I don't like the.
Not from Jerome, is that what you're saying?
Oh, okay. We'd like to, I'm.
So what I'll do is I'll talk to Dave, have him look at it, give us a price per sign, and then find out. I think, I think Steve's leaving for vacation tomorrow, and then once he comes back, we'll find out, maybe we have him tomorrow.
Excellent. Thank you, sir. Yes, Scott. Yes, another Scott.
Another Scott, hi, Scarborough, Fourth Federal Lane. I'm the post commander for LEAF VFW Post one oh six seven six. We have two signs that say welcome to Lee, home of LEAF VFW Post one oh six seven six. And it was an award that we got for our standing community service that we did in twenty twenty-one, I believe. They're reflective, they're maybe eighteen by thirty, we have two of them. We've been working with Steve to try to get them up, it's been a whole thing with the state and everything. It's not as easy as one would think to just put a sign up. So we have two of those signs that we could, and our hope was to put them on the Town of Lee signs. And there is three, welcome to the Town of Lee signs, there is one in South Lee, on one fifty-five, there is one in North Lee, and then there's the one right out of George Bennett Road. I, I did try to entertain, when we only had the one sign, entertain the one, put it out with that sign out there. And Mr. Daley didn't want that, because he was afraid that if we did that, then everybody else and their uncle would want to put a sign out there as well. And he has a problem with people putting signs out there without his permission, so I was like, okay, I get that. Steve spoke to the state of New Hampshire, and they don't have a problem with us putting the signs up. Steve has in his possession our two signs now, and we're just waiting for them to be put up. So we're gonna be putting those up as well. Hopefully, after talking with another Scott with State DOT, he doesn't have a problem with us putting them on the, there's, I don't know if you've seen them on one fifty-five, but there's, there's two signs where we do the roadside cleanup. LEAF VFW Post one oh six seven six does the roadside cleanup, scenic highway, whatever it is. And we were gonna put the signs up on that, and he doesn't have a problem with us doing that, as long as it doesn't impede the flow of traffic, which it wasn't going to. We were thinking about putting them up in the LEAF triangle, we talked to Steve about that, but then somebody, that's where the other welcome to LEAF sign was, that got taken out, that's right, there was four signs. And it got taken out by the accident, so. But there is two signs that we do hope to, and my guys have been trying to get me to get on Steve to get them up, but I know the highway guy, I mean, work with him, so I know the highway guys are busy, so. But it is gonna be happening, so we will have other signs that, and they are reflective, so, but like I said, they're eighteen by thirty, and they're really nicely done from the VFW, so we'll have those as well, but I just wanted to put that out there. But yes, I've noticed that as well, but it was down there.
Don't, don't leave, don't leave, I'm not done with signs, and it involves you guys. There is a circular, I think it's cement, it's about that big, and it says the Seal of the United States Army.
In front of the annex?
Yes, would you guys like to have that?
Okay.
It was given to the town, and specifically to Bill Booth, and he doesn't know what to do with it, so when he left that building to go over the other building, he left it there. And he doesn't know what to do with it, so is there some purpose that maybe the VFW could use that?
We could actually put that over at Memorial Field, a bunch of the guys have been asking about that. Of course, there's many different branches in the VFW, so we all have that camaraderie. But yes, that's been mentioned, and people, people have asked me, hey, what's up with that army thing out in front of the old annex? And I'm like, I don't know, I'll find out about it, but I.
Well, I beat you to it.
Okay, great, well, thank you very much.
Is, is the board okay with us giving that to the?
Fantastic.
And we're, we're meeting tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
Oh, tomorrow.
The keeper of the calendar, uh, for Federal.
Oh, the VFW meeting and a lunch schedule tomorrow, so that's not gonna happen. But I'll, I'll, I'll.
So.
Plot for me, we'll get that, we'll get that taken care of, and yeah, we'll take possession of that, and we'll probably end up putting that over at Memorial Field with the, with the new flower beds that we put in.
Okay. So. You'll just have to deal with the Navy and the Air Force and the Marines and.
All the others, so, you know, I mean, first. Thank you.
Oh, sorry, before you go, how was the flag return? That happened already, right?
Oh, yeah, yeah, that was, that was wonderful, we learned a big lesson.
Which ones?
Put the flags on the pile before you light it.
Oh.
Rather than light the pile and then add the flags to it, because it was a big pile and it got really hot really quick. A lot harder and went a lot quicker than we all thought it would. So in the future, good, good learning lesson for everyone, we all had a good laugh about it, and it got done, but yes, thank you, so.
Is it the intention of the VFW to have that be an annual thing, or?
I think we're gonna, we're gonna try to do that as an annual thing. Because we used to do, we used to do it with the Boy Scouts over, we've done it here, and we used to do it at Flag Hill Winery. And then Frank sold that and moved on, and then we were doing it at the Sportsman's Club over in Exeter. But when COVID hit and everything, everybody shut everything down, and it hasn't been done for a few years, so a bunch of the guys wanted to do it in town, so. And, and I think, I think that's what, I think that's what the intention is, is we're gonna be doing that like yearly on around Flag Day, so.
Excellent.
Great idea.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Anything else in new business? Other business, we have lots of business. Okay, so I moved into. Okay, so I moved into, moved to enter non-public section, MRS A ninety-one dash A, code in three, room number two, section A. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, look, Katrina Casper?
Yes.
Rebecca Hawthorne?
Yes.
Scott, yes, motion passes. All right, so I moved to seal the non-public minutes, do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? No, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Oh, wait a minute, roll call, roll, sorry. Katrina Casper?
Yes.
Rebecca Hawthorne?
Yes.
Scott, yes, motion passes. Anything else for the good of the? No? No? Motion to adjourn, do I have a second? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion passes.